Thank you. We'd like to begin and open up tonight's meeting, Town Council Meeting for August 4th, 2014, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Roll call please.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clements.
Excused.
Counselor Estrada.
Present.
Counselor Manah.
Present.
Counselor Moriarty.
Present.
Counselor Pellicwen.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Present.
Counselor Vecchia.
Present.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is to consider and accept the Town Council Meeting Minutes of Monday, July 21st, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia.
On page, on page six, it says Counselor Vecchia stated he sent, stated he sent over the primary goals and objectives. He stated he would like to lower every budget by one percent in fiscal year 2016. It should say budget by at least one percent in fiscal year 2015. At least one percent, 215. You heard me okay, right? Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number four is Subcommittee Reports. The first one is General Government, and since Counselor Clements is not here tonight, I'll read those quickly for you. Meeting of the General Government Subcommittee was held on Monday, July 28th, in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were Chairwoman Clements, Committee Members Vandal and Counselor Moriarty. Also in attendance were Counselor Manah, Counselor Steves, Town Manager Pecos, Richard Nash, and Linus Bissette. Chairwoman Clements called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number one, review potential citizen member requests and vote to approve two citizen members to the General Government Subcommittee for a one-year term to expire July 31st, 2015, and to submit to council for ratification. A motion was made by Counselor Clements and seconded by Counselor Vandal to open the meeting for discussion. Counselor Vandal recommended Michael James and Holly Cristo. Counselor Clements said she feels that continuity during this time might be a good idea. Motion was made by Counselor Vandal and seconded by Counselor Clements with a favorable recommendation to council to appoint Michael James and Holly Cristo as citizen members to the General Government Subcommittee for a one-year term set to expire July 31st, 2015. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to nothing. Other, Counselor Clements made a motion, seconded by Counselor Vandal, to add an agenda item to extend the pool opening dates. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to nothing. Counselor Clements said that she requested this agenda item be added due to the urgency needed for a vote to extend the pool closing dates. Discussion was held on the feasibility and cost involved in extending the dates for the pool closing. Mr. Pecos said he would get back to the council on how it could be done. Motion was made by Counselor Clements and seconded by Counselor Vandal with a favorable recommendation to council to extend the pool closing dates if feasibly possible. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to zero. A citizen came forward with concerns on drug activity and crime in the Lower Main Street area and around convenience stores. He said, "We need to wake up and open up our eyes. We need changes, and our police need to get to know our children." He also made a request for a handicapped parking spot on Chapin Street, and this request has been forwarded to the Traffic Commission. Motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Vandal and seconded by Counselor Moriarty. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to zero. The meeting was adjourned at 8:00 PM. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera Recording Clerk. And I do not know of currently any general government meetings currently scheduled, but if there are, will be posted and let you know soon. B, DPW, Counselor Vandal.
Thank you. Department of Public Works Subcommittee, County Southbridge, Tuesday, July 29th, 2014. Meeting of the Department of Public Works Subcommittee was held on Tuesday, July 29th, 2014, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance was myself, committee members Counselor Clements and Counselor Estrada. Also in attendance were Counselor Steves, Counselor Manah, Counselor Vecchia, Mark Morin, Estelle Cowett, and Roger Cowett, and Richard Nash. I called the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Agenda item number one, review potential citizen member requests and vote to approve, approve two citizen members to the Department of Public Works Subcommittee for a one-year term to expire July 31st, 2015, and submit to council for ratification. A motion was made by Counselor Clements to open, open discussion, seconded by Counselor Estrada. Counselor Clements nominated Mark Morin and Roger Cowett as citizen members, seconded by Counselor Estrada. Counselor Vandal nominated Mark Morin and Steve Lazo as citizen members. Counselor Vandal based his nomination on a number of years of expertise. Counselor Clements stated she attended a number of meetings last year and Mr. Lazo was not there. She stated they need people to provide input. Counselor Clements said Mark Morin provided good input and does his due diligence, and Mr. Cowett arrives at the meeting, does his homework, and shows how much he cares for the town. A motion was made by Counselor Clements and seconded by Counselor Estrada with a favorable recommendation to council to approve. Mark Morin and Roger Cowett, citizen members to the Department of Public Works Subcommittee for a one-year term to expire July 31st, 2015. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, three to nothing. Counselor Vecchia asked if Roger Cowett would pull his name from PPP Subcommittee. Mr. Cowett stated he would try for both committees. Counselor Clements said Roger goes to all the meetings and has a good report. She stated he has a mutual understanding and is cooperative. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Clements and seconded by Counselor Estrada. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, three to nothing. Meeting adjourned at 6:30 PM. Respectfully submitted Stacy Reno Recording Clerk. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Education and Human Services, Counselor Pellicwen.
Thank you. A meeting of the Education and Human Services Subcommittee was held Tuesday, July 29th, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, committee members Counselor Steves and Counselor Vecchia. Also in attendance were Counselor Manah, Counselor Estrada, Counselor Vandal, Counselor Clements, Richard Nash, Roger Cowett, Estelle Cowett, Martina Shea, Kristen O'Clare, Amanda Richards, and Leanne Pate. I called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number one, review potential citizen member requests and vote to approve two citizen members to the EHS Subcommittee for a one-year term to expire, to expire July 31st, 2015, and submit to council for ratification. A motion was made by Counselor Vecchia to open up discussion. Counselor Steves asked all candidates for a brief summary of their background and interest in the EHS Subcommittee. Leanne Pate stated she had a child in the school system and is very involved. She's been a member of the Commission on Disabilities for three years and is interested in the process of the budget and how to allocate money. She stated it is a good learning experience. Kristen O'Clare stated she keeps the counselors busy with questions and was recommended to apply for boards. She has a child in the school system as well as a financial background. She has an interest in the allocation of funds in the town. Martina Shea stated that she's taught in school for many years and is a certified librarian. She stated she has learned a lot at the Subcommittee in the past. Counselor Manah advised all work done at the Subcommittee still goes to council for ratification. Counselor Clements said the Subcommittee does the business of the council. She explained it is an opportunity to get information together prior to going upstairs. She stated they fought hard to keep citizen members. She stated it helps everybody, and she is grateful for those who put their names forward. Counselor Steves nominated Martina Shea as a citizen member, seconded by Counselor Vecchia. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to nothing. Counselor Steves nominated Kristen O'Clare as a citizen member, seconded by Counselor Pellicwen. Vote by a show of hands, two to one. Counselor Vecchia opposed. Counselor Vecchia nominated Leanne Pate as citizen member, seconded by Counselor Steves. Vote by a show of hands, one to two opposed. Steves and Pellicwen. Martina Shea and Kristen O'Clare were nominated by a vote with a favorable recommendation to council as citizen members to the EHS Subcommittee for a one-year term to expire, to expire July 31st, 2015. Agenda item number two, vote to approve the appointment of Amanda Richards of Southbridge to the Historical Commission for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2017, and submit to council for ratification. Counselor Vecchia asked how many members are on the Historical Commission. Amanda Richards said there should be seven, but there are six. Counselor Manah left the meeting at 7:18 PM. Counselor Steves asked why Ms. Richards is interested in the Historical Commission. Ms. Richards said she had a shared interest in the town and wishes to add historical knowledge to the whole community. A motion was made by Counselor Vecchia and seconded by Counselor Steves with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the appointment of Amanda Richards of Southbridge to the Historical Commission for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2017. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to nothing. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Vecchia and seconded by Counselor Steves. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to nothing. Meeting adjourned at 7:20 PM. Respectfully submitted Stacy Reno Recording Clerk. And as of now, I have no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. D, Planning and Development, Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. A meeting of the Planning and Development Subcommittee was held on Wednesday, July 30th, 2014, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Subcommittee Members Counselor Estrada, Counselor Steves, and citizen members Evelyn Petrelli and Roger Cowett. Also in attendance were Counselor Moriarty, Counselor Clements, Town Manager Pecos, Wallace McKenzie, and Estelle Cowett. Chairman Manah called the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. I went through the rules and protocol of the Subcommittee. Agenda item number one, review potential citizen member requests and vote to approve two citizen members to the Planning and Development Subcommittee for a one-year term to expire July 31st, 2015, and submit to council for ratification. A motion was made by Counselor Steves and seconded by Counselor Estrada to open the agenda item for discussion. Counselors asked questions of the candidates on why they wanted to join the PND Subcommittee and what they would like to see happen in the next year. Counselor Steves nominated Evelyn Petrelli and Wallace McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Estrada. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to zero. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Steves and seconded by Counselor Estrada. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to zero. I adjourned the meeting at 7:25 PM. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera Recording Clerk. And I do have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday, August 7th, in the George Parent Room at 7:00 PM. There are about six agenda items on that agenda. I can tell you the last one will be for the chickens. Thank you.
Thank you. E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Carrasco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A meeting of the Protection and Properties, Persons and Property Subcommittee was held on Wednesday, July 30th, in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Counselor Manah, Counselor Vecchia. Also in attendance were Counselor Moriarty, Counselor Clements, Counselor Steves, Counselor Estrada, Town Manager Pecos, Gary Forsier, Roger, and Estelle Cowett. I called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Town Manager Pecos said that he had been asked about how non-council members were appointed and had to check into it. There are currently three provisions which Southbridge has used. Number one, Charter provides for appointment by council Subcommittee Members with confirmation by the full council. Number two, council rules and regs. Rule number four provides for nominations by Subcommittee Chair. Number three, council rules and regs. Rule 4A provides an appointment by council chair subject to council confirmation. Mr. Pecos said that regulations cannot conflict with the Charter, therefore appointments must be made by council Subcommittee Members with confirmation by the full council. Agenda item number one was to review potential citizen member requests and to vote to approve two citizen members to the Protection of Persons and Property Subcommittee for a one-year term to expire July 31st, 2015, and to submit to council for ratification. A motion was made by Counselor Manah and seconded by Counselor Vecchia to open the agenda item for discussion. Counselor Manah nominated Jack Jovan and Gary Forsier, seconded by Counselor Carrasco. Counselor Carrasco said four citizen had submitted applications, and the other two have been nominated to other Subcommittees. Mr. Cowett stated that he had applied to two Subcommittees, and PPP was his first choice, but because DPW had their meeting first, he had been nominated to that Subcommittee. Counselor Vecchia nominated Roger Cowett, seconded by Counselor Manah. Mr. Cowett said he would like to see guidelines in effect for serving on any town committees. Votes taken by a show of hands, Jack Jovan, two votes, Monique Manah, and Esteban Carrasco. Gary Forsier, three votes, all that are present, all councilors. Counselor Vecchia, Counselor Manah, and myself, and Roger Cowett, one vote. Counselor Vecchia. A motion was to adjourn, was made by Counselor Vecchia and seconded by Counselor Manah. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to nothing. A meeting was adjourned at 6:25. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera Recording Clerk. And I do not have any meeting scheduled. That's it.
Thank you. F, Town Manager Search Committee, Counselor Carrasco.
Yes, we did have a meeting last Thursday to review the, the deadline for our resumes. We received 52 resumes, and 25 of them which had some governmental experience. We are in the process of sending now essay questions to the candidates that our consulting firm feels that were top-tier candidates. So it's about 14 candidates that will receive essay questions, and we have another meeting scheduled for September 4th. That is our next meeting that is scheduled, September 4th, to review the responses from those essay questions. That's all I have.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, Chairman's Announcements. I just have two quick ones. One is the Andrew J. Petro Pool, the State Pool, will be closing on July 24th. This isn't something necessarily as a council action, but through the recommission and such, we will keep that open through July 24th, which is a Sunday. I'm sorry, August 24th. Secondly, we have a bulletin from the WRTA, and they have invited the general public to participate in community meetings that they'll be hosting on Thursday, August 7th, at 5:30 PM at the Jacob Edwards Library here in Southbridge on Main Street. This is your opportunity to let them know that what your comments are, suggestions, and opinions related with the WRTA Transit Service, and that your participation is very important for them. If you have any questions, give them a call at 508-791-WRTA, which is 508-791-9782. Or visit the Customer Service Office at 60 Foster Street here in Southbridge. Agenda item number six is Town Manager Announcements, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Pecos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things I want to advise the council on. First, I conducted a meeting today with almost all of the department heads regarding building demolition and which buildings. There's been some work in this area, as I think you're all aware, in past years, and so we had a good base to start from. We worked very hard to identify structures that are ready for condemnation orders or actions of variety. Some of those things are already going on, and suffice to say, I will have a comprehensive memo for you probably in a week or two. And the reason it's going to take some time is because there's a number of different initiatives going on. Some of these are the Attorney General's office, some are locally controlled, so we're gathering all that information in one place, and I'll have a comprehensive report for you. Suffice to say that I think in the, in the not distant future, per, per discussions I've had with some of you individually, I think we'll be prepared to start taking some actions that you find very favorable. I have written a detailed memo regarding the chicken bylaw. That memo was the product of a bunch of research that we did to bring you up to speed on what has happened in the last year, what happened most recently at the council meeting, and prepare that for you so you can examine what's been done, have all that history in front of you, and then make a decision how you'd like to go forward. I did take the liberty of making some recommendations to you in that memo. That should be out to you in the next couple days. I would respectfully request time on the Planning and Development Subcommittee agenda, because I understand the procedure is to go to the Subcommittee first and have a discussion with the committee regarding those recommendations, and then following the committee's attention to that, bring it to the full council. I'm hopeful we can do that for the next council meeting, but I understand that we've got to work out the details of having the Subcommittee meeting, because I know it's, you have, you need, you need time to gather the group and bring them together. But hopefully that will work. And if that does meet with the Chair's pleasure, Monique, if you can let Yvonne know, she'll get that scheduled for you. But that memo will be out to everybody in the next couple days. Wasn't sure of the protocol. Didn't know to go memo to who first, so I'm sending it to all of you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I do have that scheduled as an agenda item on Thursday's.
Oh, you do? August 7th.
Fantastic. Perfect timing. Great minds think alike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, at least one great mind anyways. Third thing, you had asked a question, and I apologize, I don't keep track of who asked the question, but I do keep track of the questions you ask from the last meeting. Can the council, can council Subcommittee meetings be televised? Met with Mike, the Cable Access Director, like I think Mike is floating around tonight, and short answer is, we do not have sufficient staff to be able to film every one of those. That's a lot of meetings. What we can do, if you want, is we can set up a remote camera, but somebody on the committee would need to operate it, and you'd basically, what you'd get is a still picture. You wouldn't get changing camera angles and things like that, like we do for council meetings. If that's something you're interested in, let me know, and we'll be happy to get that set up for you. I was also asked a question about some missing info in the weekly report from the Board of Health. Apparently, the procedure in talking with department has, the practice in the past has been, if a department head is on vacation and the report doesn't get written. Most of the department heads do not have deputies that can do that. Those that do have their deputy write a report, and I think you've probably seen those. Those that don't, there really isn't anyone to write the report, so that just, that just noted department head on vacation. And if you want to change to that, let me know, I will do what I can, but it's a question of who is in that staff who is qualified to write a report about department activities, and that's kind of an open question. And the last thing I wanted to let you know, thanks to the good work of Mike Montigny, if he's out there floating around, the Cable Access Director, also a teacher at the high school. Mike has jumped on the problem with the microphones. The consultant to the Cable Access, Southbridge Cable TV, who does microphone sound problems, the technical person, in other words, will be here on Thursday. He's going to try some different equipment and see what works. As soon as we can figure out what will give you better ability to hear one another and hear in the room, we'll get a price proposal for that, and we'll figure out how to get this fixed. I want you to know that Mike and I took this as the highest priority, because it's very important for obvious reasons, that people who attend the council meetings can hear them, and that you can hear each other. You are the leaders of this government, and goodness knows, we can't have a technical problem getting in the way of your ability to function. So that's a very high priority. We're getting on it, and I do apologize to you that there's been a bit of a, of a delay, but Mike called today and was very vigorous in his efforts with the consultants, so I think we'll have that resolved soon. And that's all I have for you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seven, which is swearing in and presentation. We have one tonight, and we have in the back of the room, and they'll be coming up here, is a group of 17 and 18-year-olds who play for the big league here in Southbridge, the Southbridge Little League's Big League Division. And this team here went on and, and won the District Five Championship, and then went on to play in the state championships, really just kind of coming just short of going to the Big League World Series down in Delaware, which Southbridge hasn't done in probably 10, 15 years. So with that, as they come up, I'd like to turn it over to the league's current president, Scott Tatro.
Thank you, Chairman. As the chairman said, I'm Scott Tatro, I'm the president this year of the Southbridge of the league, and we're always looking for a positive note to keep our, our league moving forward. And this team here this year has done an excellent job with the leadership of Coach Torres. We actually even brought one of our teams down, our major league teams, to watch them play, to learn some of the aspects of what to accomplish and what to look for. So they've been a very big inspiration this year, and we want to, we're glad that you guys are honoring them tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Coach Torres.
Thanks, guys. Good night. I want to say we had a great season for Southbridge, which is huge for us, because we were kind of losing the sport of baseball around here. And these kids gladly came to me with their parents, said, "Coach, I want to play hard. We want to get somewhere. We want to bring baseball back to Southbridge," and they did. They worked very hard this year. And we just came just a little short of getting to the Little League World Series out there in Delaware, but very proud of these boys. Quite a few that are missing here, because obviously now we have football camp, and these guys are just athletes, and they're, they're there at football camps, but I want to give them all recognition because they worked very hard for us, for our hard parents that brought them here and worked hard with these kids. And I want to do a special thanks to Chris and Kim Hogan. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have what we have today, which is an organized team. They were there, working night and day, hard paperwork, trying to make sure all these kids had all the paperwork together, making sure everything was legal for us to go out there, play hard, and they worked very hard, got on very good uniforms. We had a great season. I appreciate that from Chris and Kim Hogan, and then to Scott Tatro. Lot of work also, working with the Hogan family. They made it possible for us to get this far, and I just want to give appreciation to, I'm going to name off the names, but a lot of these guys aren't here, so I want to say to Alex Belanger, very good player, the youngest kid on our team. He came, worked hard, wasn't able to play in the tournament, but he was able to play the season and played very hard. He got a little feel for what it is, but next year, he's ready to go, and he's ready. We have John Hogan here. He's a pitcher, outfielder, very good athlete, very good parents, worked hard. I have Tyler Stover, a very good pitcher, athlete, came hungry, wanted to work, very good with the kids. We have Brendan Casalotta, a very athletic kid, very fast, center fielder, locked down everything out there. Jordan Torres, another pitcher, could use him anywhere, catcher, outfielder, very good athlete, and his older brother, Emilio Torres, which sadly we will be losing this year, only because of age, and he's going to college to do better and better things. But, you know, I don't know if he's got any words to say about the younger guys, because he is leaving us this year, but I am proud of these guys. We did make it to the championship, District Five. We won it, and came a little short, like I said, to get to the Little World Series out in Delaware, but I'm very proud of them. Oh, excuse me, one guy. I'm very sorry. I am sorry. I got another big guy here, showed up a little late. You know how that goes, these kids, but Dante Ortiz came and filled in the shoes big time at first base. Came in with some big at-bats and some big walks, huge walks to get us on a walk-off win against Oxford to get us to the championship. So thank you very much, Dante. This is the captain of the team, 18 years old. He'll be moving on now.
All right, it's going to be real quick. I just got to say, throughout the season, you know, we came from different towns, different people, and it was good. Baseball brought us together, you know. Throughout the season, as we won games, we just got closer, and even though we fell short in that last game that we had, there was so much support from the town, from families and everybody around, that it was good to see, you know, even though we fell a little bit short, we were still going out at like 100 miles an hour. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Just quickly, and I think I can speak for, for Counselor Carrasco as well on this, as former coaches and board members in the league, there is a lot, there are a lot of teams that, that when it comes to July and the All-Star Tournament start, that everybody seems to think that they've got a real good chance to go ahead and make some noise and do that, and they find out very quickly, it's not as easy as, as we think it is. And these guys, some of whom I've had the fortune to coach, and I'm sure Counselor Carrasco did as well, not always to the same success levels, especially with Dante, but they did an excellent, excellent job and did something very proud, that they should be very proud of. of, and at this point, between Councilor Carrasco and Scott, if we could, we have a little surprise for these guys, that they, as well as the rest of the community, and everybody in the neighboring communities, will be able to see very soon.
All right.
And from what I understand, at this point, these will be going up soon, one will be by the Southbridge Sturbridge line, which is always nice to show Sturbridge who we are, and the other will be on this, towards the Southbridge Charlton line. So, in both ends, we'll be well represented for some great work that these guys did. And I guess just quickly, since the newspapers aren't here, but they did ask for a photo op, so I figure what we can do to let everybody else in as well, is kind of meet up here in the well of the signs.
Maybe they should be, yeah.
They're guys.
I'm tall, man. I think, I think he should be.
Camera ready. So look straight at that.
Before we end the night today, there were other players here, I just want to give them a shout-out. They can only be here today only because, like I said, some of them are out of state on vacation, or they're at camp for football, I just want to make their names put out there. I'm going to name the whole team as it goes, our full team, as we had this year that represented Southbridge, was Alex Belanger, John Hogan, Tyler Stover, Brendan Casalotta, Jordan Torres, Emilio Torres, Dante Ortiz, Brandon Aviles, Abdul Ramos, Nick Brewer, Danny Gilligan, Jacob Roberts, Jacob Rankovich, Josh Rivera, and Nathaniel Rassasani. Thank you very much.
We'll be moving on, thank you again, to agenda item number eight, Citizens Forum. If we have any citizens that would like to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda, please come forward and identify yourself and your address. While we wait for that, just in conversation with the town manager, in reference to rules and regs, and Roberts Rules of Order and such, as a reminder, mostly to ourselves as counselors, when it comes to the Citizens Forum, it's for them to speak, so we really, in general, in terms of, I think you said, the Attorney General's Office, really are not supposed to be responding per se during Citizens Forum. Certainly, if you have thoughts afterwards during Counselors Forum, so be it, but in general, any questions coming from citizens really should go through to the manager. So one more time, if we have anybody who is interested in coming up to speak as part of Citizens Forum on something that is not on tonight's agenda, going once. Would you like to speak, Mr. Pissette? Or?
Yes.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am a citizen of Southbridge, and a citizen of Dandenah. I'm not afraid anymore. These people are very dangerous. Sanity, I admit, they are a very unusual age, without freedom of mind, and citizens of Southbridge land, and I'm very upset, but that's why I forgive them any either one. The man is so open, all your eyes, don't be afraid, stand up when you believe in today. I repeat, with that gall of my head, about three weeks ago, if we don't have somebody reading that card, and we don't read the M V D, we're going to have children in the ground, and they covered up. Nobody knows what really happened with these children, whatever was your child, or your child, or your child, your, your, whatever was one of your children, or they remember. We have people in my building, they act, we love this, and a video, that they think, they young people, they very nice people, when they're not drinking, that they use the jail, oh, my child, you bet were my child, I'll tell ya, wow, we're hard enough, no. You and the people in the town, citizens, you want to be very, and people, you want to be, I don't run a dollar, and a mini-bad, and all these two things, all right, then sit down, and don't cry later, but, uh, when I die, I meant to have money and sanity, I wanted to have freedom of mind, I was crying and sore, you know, I said, please help me. Yeah, right. The other road, I know they had a joke, I said, do we have a husband, or a woman, or an active youth, not for you, you go home. It was a matter of time, I said, thank you, that was another matter. If you don't mind it, and you had to edit all the money and committee, I'm sorry, this is a slam dunk, and then all the road, let's block the money, let's put it in the moon, I'm anymore, people really wrong, with the F D, or on somebody's web. Please, people, wait up. Do you want to sit on your porch at night, and your G I D used to do, laugh, yo, and that, although, look at that, they're running down the road, without a button, windows, without a button, doors, listen, I don't fear that, I've been out for seven days, seven nights, my family are so disoriented, they're afraid, they're dead, and I said, all that, don't be a sin, don't. When you gather there, it's not a seventy, it's alright, Southbridge went down the dome, you people were very odd, but it ain't about money, it's about, what's on earth, let's get back in our system, let's get these people, they're the same plan, they're young, it's what went wrong, but I may not be after tonight, our prison is terrible, and I'm in them there every one of them. They're training, they're over-tired, they're over-ward, over-nam, they have other jobs in their life, and they try to build a better future for their children, not realizing, why they think that they can build their children, if you're going to use them now, for power and authority, my father picked me out of this, plus my brothers in D A, oh yeah, my brothers are born again, not born, but not yet, but not yet, it gave me the heart, I, I ain't no station, I don't run a third grade education, I've been on most tries in the past, now, when I see reality, people want to throw away teachers, and homes, and a friend, and they do not take advantage, you know why? That's what they want, they want you to take their advantage, so if you have power, so when they go to jail, who will be there? That's me. So, I'm not that familiar, you, you know you're guilty, wait for that, eat it, wait for that, I say, it's time, let's get all over the place, and say, that's not the normal mind, two thirty days, but you remember, police officers, young people, we're all human, we're going to make that trial, we're going to make that appearance, we're going to say the wrong thing, it was going to be bad. I dare be for you, and I did, I need children, all right, this is all a bad, for everybody, I mean, oh, and then, I wandered around all night long, and I did the amazing thing that you don't see, even though my wife is on the way, I bet all to my best, I'm going to tell ya, I'm already at that door, but it's not that door alone, I'm on my evidence, and I'm threatened, what I did wrong, but I never ruined it, more than we out there, everybody, I yelled at people, and I had to live in front of town, but for that case of violence, I ran my river rabbit, and I ran, and today, in front of you, if you need a bad service, we step down, but you're young, if you're not, I, let, let's get it, I'm more alone on danger, and I, we out of luck. Yes, but I said, I repeat myself, and when I saw that gentleman on our TV, about three weeks ago, I made it, I could just listen, everything he said, almost spread to grass, you know why? And we, we did our right, one way or another, I'm bothered me that I don't want to be, but I want to be that, that you're doing, we're feeling sour, I want to be a person that people want on the side of me, and they, hey, you want to go to that Southbridge, bother you? Um, wow, what bother you? Did you hear, they play the bad things? Everybody down there, I'm hoping, but I said, don't worry, it's not a paper, it's not, it's hard, it's, it's not, when you try to make tree, you need somebody somewhere, that's like they used to be, and they, they help you, or you need somebody trained, that is, you're right. And Southbridge is not tolerated no more, can we say that, please? Can we say that? Southbridge is not tolerated no more, or you're like it, or barrier, and they, we got it.
Mr. Pissette, you've hit your five-minute mark, we can give you an additional three minutes if you so want it, we can have the council to give you that.
I didn't want to hear.
Yep, but we just have to have a vote to allow those three minutes, if somebody makes a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, go ahead.
My family is free, I say that, my name, you never cared for nothing, when I told my two children, raised, right, a three-year-old, and a four-year-old, and then, another gentleman died in the town, I don't even know, and a young girl died, with the media doomed, and the town of Southbridge, they, I would have over, I'm not human, I'm not human. People are dying out there, I never had to believe it, and we're afraid of our own loneliness, we're afraid of people that were raised, who know, with the public day, with the young men over there Monday, with that young, no, am I a venue, I am all died, deep, I, but I said, it's, it's not about me, but that's what, I was there, I did packing out and moving out of town, that town is losing too much money, I dragged, and the criteria, thought I was liberating one way out, I did my homework, and I don't even have an internet, I wandered around, I did it all, I lived that night, I wanted little children, quiet, mommy, where am I here? Quiet, and although that's them quiet, my family, what I do, I did the other night, I say that I was moving it, no, I'm not moving it, I said, break up, and then, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pissette. Do we have anybody else here tonight who would like to speak as part of Citizens Forum on anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, move on to agenda item number nine, vote to confirm the appointment of Amanda Richards of Southbridge to the Historical Commission for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2017.
So moved.
We have a motion and second, is there any discussion, questions, concerns? Seeing none, simple hand votes, I think suffice for these, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous of all present. Agenda item number 10, vote to confirm the appointment of Holly Cristo to the General Government Subcommittee for a one-year term effective August 1st, 2014 through July 31st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number 11, vote to confirm the appointment of Michael James to the General Government Subcommittee for a one-year term effective August 1st, 2014 through July 31st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number 12, vote to confirm the appointment of Mark Moore into the Department of Public Works Subcommittee for a one-year term effective August 1st, 2014 through July 31st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number 13, vote to confirm the appointment of Roger Calwet to the Department of Public Works Subcommittee for a one-year term effective August 1st, 2014 through July 31st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number 14, vote to confirm the appointment of Martina Shea to the Education and Human Services Subcommittee for a one-year term effective August 1st, 2014 through July 31st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number 15, vote to confirm the appointment of Kristen O'Clair to the Education and Human Services Subcommittee for a one-year term effective August 1st, 2014 through July 31st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Councilor Estrada, didn't catch a fewer, four, okay, so that would be seven, four, and one opposed.
Who's opposed?
Councilor Manah. Agenda item number 16, vote to confirm the appointment of Gary Forseer to the Protection of Persons and Properties Subcommittee for a one-year term effective August 1st, 2014 through July 31st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number 17 is vote to confirm the appointment of Jack Jovan to the Protection of Persons and Properties Subcommittee for a one-year term effective August 1st, 2014 through July 31st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number 18, vote to confirm the appointment of Evelyn Petrelli to the Planning and Development Subcommittee for a one-year term effective August 1st, 2014 through July 31st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number 19, vote to confirm the appointment of Wallace McKenzie to the Planning and Development Subcommittee for a one-year term effective August 1st, 2014 through July 31st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number 20, vote to accept the warrant for the state primary election on Tuesday, September 9th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number 21 is Counselors Forum, and we'll start with Councilor Pellican.
Thank you, Counselor. I'd just like to announce, since nobody else did, I saw in our weekly report last week, can you hear me?
We can't hear you.
Okay, I'll try to speak a little louder. I read in our weekly report last week that the Jacob Edwards Library has free passes available for the Petro Pool, and I'd like to share that information. I believe you can check them out as if they were a library book for the day and then return them. And normally, the pool costs $4 per person, so if you can get in for free and you have a family, it is a good cost savings. And also... And also, I'd like to mention that it isn't the only pass that they have available, they also have free and discount passes to a number of museums in the area. They have the Ecotarium, the Massachusetts Parks Pass, which lets you into fifty different state parks for free, the Fruitlands Museum in Harvard, Massachusetts, the Mystic Aquarium, the Roger Williams Park Zoo in Providence, the Tower Hill Botanic Garden in Boylston, and the USS Constitution Museum in Boston. So feel free to check one of those out at the library if you're interested. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to remind all the citizen members that have been appointed tonight to subcommittees to go to the town clerk's office and get sworn in. It's very important, especially for the planning and development, we have a meeting Thursday. Also, I would like to comment on one of the concerns that Mr. Bissett had for Counselors' Forum and safety, he did come to one of the subcommittees in regards to safety. And it is up to us to be aware of our surroundings, and if we do see something going on in town that we don't feel is right, we should report it, and we shouldn't have to fear for ourselves if we do report it. You can remain anonymous if you report something to police. If you want to start up a neighborhood crime watch, if you're worried about things going on in your neighborhood, or if you just want to keep an eye on things, get ahold of Chief Sherret or Lieutenant Wilson down at the Police Department, 508-764-5420. I'm sure they'd be happy to speak with you about that, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Strada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good night. Citizens, welcome all today to the seat on the Asian, the Committee. We are being select. It's honor for me working together. I hope to help you to the build the city, the state, the progress, to bring the good idea to the people enough for owing, and maybe learn from the mistake and the anti-proposed ideas. Or the people want to do that, and we are, we are the ones that were marked to begin the progress. August 7, the first meeting, the plan, the development, it's the first day, the change, they tell the people, the people all day talk to, ask me, "Hey, Strada, control Strada, what change, the good idea for the citizens? What for you, what's the good idea? What for you, for changing people? What for you, for the government?" August 7, people, you now, you see me on the TV, August 7, the first day, the first day, August 7, good, thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Counselor Carrasco.
I just have one thing, for all those that are interested in being part of the Fire Station Research Committee, and the reason I say Research Committee, due to the fact that it's not, it's basically this, to research whether we build a new fire station, upgrade the one we have, so it is a research committee. And if you are interested in being part of that, you can submit a letter of interest to the town manager's office, or you can submit a letter to Chief DeFranzo, who is overseeing the selection of the Fire Search Research Committee. I know this was something that had been discussed last year during PPP subcommittees, and now that I am in charge of, I am the chairman of PPP, I do not want to also just forget about it. So if you are interested in being part of that Research Committee in regards to the firehouse, please contact the fire department, speak to Chief DeFranzo, or just submit a letter of interest to the town manager's office that you would want to serve on that committee. And also, I just want to thank all those that were part of the Community Build Day. I know I showed up at the end, I was glad to be able to take the picture of all that stayed there and helped. Literally, that's all I did. Due to another commitment, I was not able to get there any earlier. But I want to thank all those that came out and built the playground on West Street, West Street School. I know the kids will be very grateful, you guys did a great job, the playground looks great, it would be awesome to see it completed with everything, with all the fixings, that they still have minor things to do. But again, I just want to thank the community, because again, one of the things that I ran on was to unite the strength of the community. And on Saturday, what I was able to see was the strength of the community unite for the best of our kids in our community. And again, I just want to thank you for coming out together to make that happen, because we're going to have many children this fall that are going to be able to use that playground, something that they have not been able to do for at least two years. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Counselor Vandal.
Thank you. I think we're losing the town, roads and sidewalks, we're losing them, because the weeds are like two feet high now, coming out of the sidewalks, coming out of the gutters, and I think it's time, you know, we've got to get something done about that, it doesn't look nice. When you're pulling into town, you know, people look at that for cleanliness, and I don't think it's nice at all. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Vecchia.
I have a few things for the town manager, for the chairman. To begin with, you mentioned about the missing Board of Health report, that he has no deputy. That's not good enough, I like to see a report every week. The second thing, on your weekly report, you have labor relations, that you had a meeting with Charlton on the water agreement with Charlton. Could you explain to me where that is at right now?
Sure. The town, Charlton is preparing a draft amendment to the interministerial agreement that currently exists, and once that draft is prepared, then I'll meet with them and take a look at that. We're also doing some technical studies on our side, although there's been a fair amount of work done, there's still a little bit more than needs to be done. And I understand Charlton is having their own meetings with some of the primary users, three schools and the Masons, I think it's called the Overlook Facility, if I'm correct, to ascertain their interests so that we can get an idea of exactly who in Charlton would be a user, and how much money would be, how much water they'd be interested in receiving, and then the technical aspects of our ability to deliver that.
Well, when's it going to come to a head?
I can't say for certain, it's really, the ball is pretty much in Charlton's court at this point, to pull together what they want so that we can then respond to them.
Well, should all the council get involved and have a meeting with all the people from Charlton?
You're certainly more than welcome to it anytime you'd like, they're not asking for that right now, so I'm not sure exactly what the meeting would be about. I think it's more, at this point, probably at the staff level, to prepare some sort of a proposal which you would then react to. There's no, there's no proposal at this point.
Well, I'd like to see a proposal as soon as possible. They have called me personally to talk to me, but I haven't talked to them, because I'd like to talk to them as a team, okay? But they have called me more than once, they want my ear, I'd like to see us all together on this, okay?
I think you reacted wisely to that initiative.
Well, I understand, I've been there before. All right, the next thing, the Southbridge News, I have something in the Southbridge News that I pulled out on Friday's paper, but before I tell you what I got, the Southbridge News is going to become a Friday Weekly, starting a week from Friday, and it only costs $18 a year, which is 35 cents a week, so I think everybody in Southbridge should pick up that paper. What I have is, I'm looking at a real estate transaction, and it says, $132,869, 115 Massey Street, Town of Southbridge, to Tri-Community Young Men's Christian Association of Southbridge, through the chairman to the town manager, this, we must have sold this a while ago, it wasn't on our beat, it was on, and we're just getting the money now, is my first question. And the second question is, where are you going to put that money? Where's it going? What fund is it going in?
I can't answer the question, because I don't frankly know anything about it.
Well, can you find out about it? I mean, I see a transaction in the paper that we sold some real estate, I'm on the town council, and I can't even tell the people what's going on.
Yeah, I apologize, I'm at a loss too, I don't know.
Well, can you find out for me, please? The next thing is, the Town of Southbridge Charter Comcast Cable License Transfer Hearing is this week. I have a lot of information about it, there's even an article in The Telegram, 6:00 PM, Thursday, August 7th. The hearing will be held at 6:00 PM on Thursday, August 7th, Southbridge Town Hall, Council Chambers, through the chairman to the town manager, can you explain to me what this hearing is going to be about, and are they taking over? Can you explain what's going on here?
Counselor. Comcast has petitioned to take over the cable franchise in Southbridge from Charter. The hearing, the law, the cable franchise law, only allows the licensing authority to consider a very narrow set of issues, specifically, the ability of the proposed operator, in this case Comcast, to operate the cable license. It does not allow licensing authority to consider failures of the current licensee or anything like that. It's a very, very narrow construct under the law, and it only deals with the qualifications of Comcast operate the license.
How's that affect us who has charter now?
That means your new operator would be Comcast, not Charter.
I understand that, but are the prices going up?
They're not allowed to raise prices except in conformance with the franchise agreement, whatever it says.
That's the franchise agreement we have with Charter?
Correct.
Thank you very much, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Steves.
I just had a couple of quick things. One of the things I'd like to do is play off of what Mr. Bissett said earlier.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
No.
How about now?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to play off a little bit on what Mr. Bissett said earlier, because I actually ran into him in, on Main Street for about half an hour a couple of days ago. And one of the things that I was wondering about, through you to the town manager, is he asked the question about whether or not it is, first of all, whether the town has an actual registry of landlords? And I was wondering, do we have such a thing? Is it required in this town? I looked up online a little bit, I found that some communities have them, but I don't know if we do. And follow-up on that would be, is there anything that we could use as far as that kind of a registry, or create one, to go after landlords that allow criminal activity in their buildings?
Well, I don't believe we have a registry of landlords formally, I've never heard of such a thing in any community I've ever worked in. I heard today during a meeting that there may be a partial list of landlords that was prepared some time ago for the purposes of code enforcement. And I can't represent to you that it's a comprehensive list, I can only represent to you that there may be a list. Now, owners of multifamily buildings are required to list their ownership with the assessing department for purposes of creating a real estate bill. So we have a list of people who own buildings. If the building is known to be a, an apartment building, then by definition, we have a list of landlords. However, to extract that from the assessors' list would be an extremely labor-intensive exercise. In terms of criminal activity in the building, we don't frankly need a list of landlords to pursue any criminal activity. If some criminal activity is suggested to us, and it's brought to the police department's attention, it's acted on very quickly.
Also, I was wondering, you, to follow up on, I don't remember who said it earlier, about the, I guess actually, Counselor Carrasco mentioned the Fire Station Research Committee. I'd also like to point out that there's a vacancy, there are vacancies in a variety of other committees, and we really do need people to come forward and fill some of these seats, for example Agriculture Conservation Commission, Sustainability, those are the ones I happen to know of off the top of my head, but I'm sure there are others. So we do need more people to come forward, you know, if you have some time, please come forward and let the town manager know that you're interested. And also, I would like to know, I was also one of the people down at the playground a couple of days ago, and I also would like to say that it was great to see everybody coming out and getting involved. And there's going to be a kind of a naming ceremony and grand opening at the end of the month, I think it's the 27th, but I'm not quite sure on that, so you want to keep tabs on the school site or the PTA site, I'm not sure exactly who's organizing that one. And that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Twenty-two, discussion of next meeting date, Counselor Carrasco.
Monday, August 25th, at 7:00 PM in Council Chambers.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Twenty-three is adjournment.
So, make a motion.
Motion and a second? All in favor? Thank you, we are adjourned.